Okay, good afternoon, everyone. This is kind of a change. I'm used to saying good evening. So, but welcome to the Bloomington City Council meeting. And I would like to ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Hey, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Kearns?
I am here.
Councilmember Montney?
Here.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Here.
Mayor Millau-Blay?
Here. And I know that Councilmember Bowlin has requested to attend the meeting remotely due to medical reasons. So can I have a motion to allow her to attend remotely?
I'll move, so.
Okay, move by Councilmember Ward. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Danenberger.
Councilmember Kearns? Yes. Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
I.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, and Councilmember Bowlin, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. We're gonna move on to item number six, which is public comment. Since we do not have recognitions or appointment, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do. We have three people who have registered to speak in person. And we'll start after you read your statement. We received no email public comment.
Okay, sounds good. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceases.
All right, and first up, we have Serena Fish.
Hello, my name is Serena Fish. Thank you to the gentleman that came up in the elevator with me. They gave me the courage to speak. Couldn't resist. Two short things. One, the last meeting you had a presentation from the McLean County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. I went to their meeting, then that next few days later. It's county, but I have to tell you, I am really impressed with the work that they're doing. All their data that they're getting is coming out of court cases, all the criminal incidences. And, and then they're following it through with all kinds of things with how many times this person's been, what were the categories? And they're coming up with really information that I, and it's today, it's timely, and it's local. And I strongly suggest that they are used instead of a safety commission. The safety commission meeting I went to, they are like kindergarten, and this is college. And you're putting a lot of time and effort into something, and it's already being done and done very well. The other thing I wanted to talk about was streetscape. I've gone to different meetings. I've gone to the layout meetings. I've gone to things. However, and all of it's good and all of it's, you know, let's see what happens, blah, 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 blah. However, when you get ready to go over that bridge to come into downtown, you have a tent city. And no one is dealing with it. They're giving them food. They're giving them tents. There's now toilets out there. They're enabling these people instead of helping them get off the street. But the bottom line is, you're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on streetscape. And this is what you see when you come in to go over the bridge into downtown. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Gary Lambert, and then last, we'll have Patrick Dillard.
Good afternoon. My name is Gary Lambert. Regarding the hockey endeavor, anything that brings a solid dollar to the mess that we've had there for twenty some years is, is a positive. I hope it works out. Last meeting, or at least at a recent meeting, talking about the streetscape. It's, it's, try and get it right here. Downtown Bloomington Street Design Study finds the public wants the classic slash contemporary hybrid. And I too went down and looked at the exhibits and stuff. I didn't see the opportunity for the public to register a none of the above. Recently, on the local radio, the mayor was on. And among other things, he discussed the problem with the illegal immigrants coming into the country and the possibility of them coming to Bloomington. And I believe his words were, we wanted to be as welcoming as possible. That's good. Three words came to my mind. Aiding, abetting, and harboring people who bloat the law. He also said that he viewed that as an opportunity. If that does in fact come to be, and it starts imposing on the taxpayers of the city, I'm not sure how many more opportunities this city can handle. We've got all these projects underway. Not a one's been paid for. Go down the list. PCPA, the Coliseum, the library, the streetscape, O'Neill Park. Got a couple seconds. Connect Transit wants to become the regional maintenance center. They've got, what, ten buses? Electric buses now. Only one is operational. And we want to become, get some more government dollars. And we have plans to buy ten more. There needs to be some serious discussion and treating money, public money as their own. Thank you.
Last up, we have Patrick Dillard.
Good afternoon. My name is Patrick Dillard. I serve as president of Friends of the Constitution Trail, and also I'm a board member of Bike Plano. I come in support of consent item I with, for the funding for the Constitution Trail Extension for engineering from Lafayette Street down to Hamilton. This is a critical section of the trail. For so many years, the southern part of the community has been disconnected from the Constitution Trail system. There's a lot of things that are going on. Hamilton Road, Fox Creek Road, that are gonna build connectivity along the southern part of the, part of the community. This section brings them into downtown area and the rest of the community. So I urge your support in approving consent item I and, and put us in a position, get the funding to build this segment. Thank you so much for your time.
There's no further public comment.
Okay, thank you. And we're gonna move on to item number seven, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Montney, and then second by Councilmember Danenberger. Are we voting electronically?
I'd vote yes.
Oh, yes, I was gonna get to you.
And you have to ignore that abstain, because that's my fault.
Yeah. I was like, I did what?
Apology.
Okay, the item passes. There are no names to announce. And now we're gonna move on to the regular agenda, consideration and action on approval of a hockey contract for the Bloomington Arena between the City of Bloomington and Illinois Hockey Club, LLC, as requested by the Arts and Entertainment Department. And as most of you know, we had the press conference earlier. So this is a very exciting, exciting day. But I'm not gonna steal the thunder from staff. I think a lot of credit goes to staff. And I'm gonna turn it over to Billy to talk about this item.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate it. Mayor and council members. We did have a fantastic press conference earlier today where the name of the proposed, it's not a proposed team. The name of the team would be the Bloomington Bison. There's a logo unveiled, and just this, this organization has put a lot of time and effort into preparing for this moment. Before you tonight, today, is a proposed lease agreement that we've been talking about for several months now. Just kind of having conversations about. We've talked a lot about hockey, but not necessarily about the nuts and bolts of the agreement. And we think it's a good agreement. It would be a twenty year agreement with Howlett Sports and Entertainment running the team and owning the team. One of the things that impressed us about the organization is that they understand the importance of, yes, it's about hockey, but it's about more than that. It's about the experience for people who are coming to games. And Sean Howlett, who was in the audience, talked a little bit about that earlier today. The agreement would be, as I said, for twenty years. There's no direct tax incentive. There was a question at the press conference earlier today asking what it would mean for taxpayers. Any amount of benefit generated would be generated based on their activities. So for example, seventy percent of food and beverage sales, one hundred percent of parking, eighty percent of hockey suite revenue, and eighty percent of arena naming rights would remain with the city. And so those things that they generate could come to them as a percentage of those, of those, those totals that they generate. The team, the team would keep all gate receipts and Ticketmaster rebates. The city and the team would partner on selling naming rights, which I know has been a conversation in this community. And they do this. And so they're very good at being able to go out and solicit folks to come in and, and, and provide sponsorships and to also work with us related to naming rights. It's something that they do as part of their existing business. Rent over the course of twenty years would be roughly five point four million dollars to the city. We also estimate that this operation annually would generate a profit to the city of roughly seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Now, when I say that, I mean from hockey operations. I don't mean the arena would now be generating seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in profit. I mean that this operation, based on our estimates of revenues and on expenses, would generate seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in profit to the city of Bloomington. And so we do have representatives here from Howlett Sports and Entertainment. But before I call them up, I'd like to ask if Anthony Nelson has anything that he'd like to say? Or did I miss anything? Or you want to provide? Sure?
Yeah, he's a man of a few words. He just does the work. He just gets the work done. Thank you, Anthony.
Okay, Jeff, anything you want to add? We're, I feel like I've used excited like twenty seven million times today. But we are, we are ecstatic about the possibility of this. And if no one else has anything to say, Sean Howlett, who is co-CEO of Howlett Sports and Entertainment, I think has a brief presentation, if you'd like to make it, and if you'd like to say anything. And Larry Gigerich is here as well. And we've talked extensively with these two guys as part of the negotiations over the last several years, several months. And it, it, it's been good, so.
Good afternoon, council. I saw a few of you this morning at our press conference. Very quickly, my father and I and my brother are the owners of Howlett Sports and Entertainment, a sports and entertainment organization based in Indianapolis, where the owners of the Indy Fuel Hockey Team, which we have been for ten years. We also have purchased and renovated a youth hockey rink there with two sheets of ice. We have just recently collaborated with the City of Fishers, where the City of Fishers is putting up a new hundred and eighty million dollar arena inside their new entertainment district, a very fast, fast growing city on its own. And we're the anchor tenant there. So it was done in our covenant of, of being the anchor tenant of how much revenue we were gonna provide to that facility. With that said, we, we, we first came here in approximately the spring of last year and met with the two deputy city managers and Anthony. And we began a conversation about bringing professional hockey back to Bloomington. Those conversations only progressed more quickly as, as, as time passed. And here this fall, we came close to agreement. I'd just like to say, number one, it's a significant investment on our part, but it was your city management that made us feel welcome. And it was your city management that part of the struggle in minor league sports around the country is when there's an adversarial relationship between the city and the sports team. And I think you may have experienced that here yourself in the past. The best success stories are when the city and sports team consider each other partners. And that's exactly what we got out of your city management here, and that's what gave us the confidence to make this investment. We had a very, very successful press conference this morning. For those of you that were in attendance, it was very highly attended. We had some of your top business leaders here in the community that attended, and I met personally and said they want to support the team. I can tell you, we unveiled our website just a few hours ago. We already have taken deposits on two hundred season tickets. So this is off to a positive start. I'm gonna allow our consultant who, who helped us, who helped us put this deal together to give a brief presentation. And then I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Great. Thank you, Sean. I'm Larry Gigerich, executive managing director of Genovas. And I'd just like to start with first, thank you for the opportunity to come before you. But in particular note, we would not be here today but the work over the last six months with Billy Tyus, Jeff Jurgens, and Anthony Nelson. It has been an incredible partnership between all of us working through this. These transactions are complicated. They take time. But as Sean said very well, we, in the Howlett family in particular, seek out places that they feel good about partnering with, and that there are shared interests. Sean's dad, Jim, says all the time, lopsided deals never work. It's truly a partnership, and that's the mentality that both the city and the Howlits had throughout this process. And we're very, very appreciative of that. What, we put together just a really brief slide deck, just to give you a little bit more information. I know those of you who were at the press conference this morning probably heard a little bit of this story. But just quickly gonna go through just a couple slides, and then Sean said, happy to answer any questions. So obviously, you know, you know your arena better, better than we do. But one of the things that we really struck by was how nice of a facility it is, the opportunity to leverage it. You know, you guys are really focused on downtown and doing some really exciting things downtown. And we're excited about that, and hopefully being a part of that, bringing people downtown for thirty six home regular season games every year. But it's a great facility. It's set up very nice. And in fact, there's a lot of similarities to it, to the new facility that's being built in Fishers for the Indy Fuel franchise. So there's a lot of things that we really like about it. We think there's a great opportunity there. Next slide, please. So just a little bit of background about Sean's dad, Jim. So very, he, he hates talking about himself, but I always like to tell just a little bit about his background. He, he served as chairman and CEO of Car, Car Global, now known as Open Lane Solutions. Fortune thousand company, public company, grew it very, very successful. And then one of his last things that he did prior to retiring was sell a large piece of that business to Carvana for over two billion dollars in, in the largest transaction that they had ever done. Very successful, a hockey guy, you know, born in Canada, became a citizen of the United States. And he likes to tell that story a lot, but has built incredible fuel franchise in Indianapolis and ECHL team with Sean and Sean's brother Chad over the years. And this is their tenth anniversary season. They just acquired and are starting up a new indoor football league team, which they're very excited about. And then just a couple of other awards. Jim's been recognized as entrepreneur of the year by Ernst &amp; Young and one of the most dynamic leaders in the state of Indiana by the Indiana Chamber of Commerce. So very accomplished business, but from my perspective, even a better, a better man, a better individual. Next slide, please. So a little bit about Howlett Sports Entertainment, Jim and his family, primarily Sean and Chad, serving as co-CEOs of the business. As I mentioned, they received an ECHL franchise in 2013. They began playing in the 2014-15 season. They are the professional minor league affiliate of the Chicago Blackhawks franchise, which was talked a little bit this morning, very successful franchise over the past decade. And, and then one of the things too, I think it speaks to the Howlits and how they build a franchise and how they operate it. Their franchise, the league periodically will do an evaluation of all their teams, you know, from a value standpoint, and also look at how they're, how they're managed. It is one of the most valuable franchises in the ECHL, and it's very, very highly regarded as one of the top minor league hockey franchises from an operation and management standpoint anywhere in the United States. I, I think that speaks well for how they will build the product here. Next slide, please. So just a couple, couple highlights to hit. As I mentioned, thirty six home regular season games, obviously opportunity for home playoff games. As Sean talked about this morning, the season runs from October to April, and the playoffs follow. This will be a close relationship. I mean, it's one thing to get the deal done. It will be continued partnership, working together with the city. There's things that we want to do to not only help build upon the youth hockey that's already here, but you, I think you'll also find that Howlett Sports Entertainment very involved in the community, communities they're in from a charitable standpoint. That is something that's very important to them as a family. And again, they'll make a significant investment. Sean mentioned this morning, two million dollars just to purchase this franchise, to be awarded franchise, the ECHL, and close to another two million dollars of startup related cost that it will take to really build this and to make sure it is very successful. Next slide. That's it. So as Sean mentioned, happy to, happy to answer any questions that you, you have for us.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And I'm gonna turn it over to council members. I see Councilmember Montney with her light, and oh, okay, all right, all right. Well, and before she gets upset with me, let me ask our council member Bowlin. Do you have questions?
I never get upset with you, Mayor. I do not have questions, but I, I wanna, I guess, piggyback on what Deputy City Manager incentives. We would not be getting any revenue but for this team coming to Bloomington to utilize our Coliseum that is in need of utilization. So there is not incentives, because we would be getting zero if they did not come here. And I really am very happy. I know the history. I've been around long enough. And this is one of the best news I've heard in a long time.
Awesome. There will be a skate off between the mayor and the mayor pro temp at some point. Councilmember Ward?
Thanks for the presentation. This is really exciting. The one little question I have is, as I was reading over the agreement, I think that typically in a year, the, the, the dates, the seventy dates that, that would be offered as available are offered a little bit earlier than now. Any concerns about getting thirty six home games scheduled this go around before the season starts?
Yeah, no, the way the process works is we ask, it's thirty six home dates. But the, and of course, the season starts in October. But the schedule will be put in place by this May. So what your arena staff has done, or what Anthony has done, is per the agreement, he's provided us with seventy dates. And the reason we do that is because we just can't provide thirty six dates to the league, because they have a computer algorithm that has to put together a schedule with everybody's available dates. So he's blocked out seventy dates for us. And what happens is, is in May, we release the balance of those dates. Now, in the spirit of cooperation, right, if Anthony were to get a concert or something that he'd like to retake one of those dates, that's the existing relationship we have right now in Indianapolis, and it does occasionally happen. And we say, that's fine. You can have a Saturday, as long as you just give us a Saturday back. And it's, it's usually a barter like that, and we've never had an issue in our ten years in Indianapolis.
And there's still enough time for this season.
There's still enough time for this.
To get all that sorted out.
Yeah.
Great.
Everything is on track. But that's why I, I'm very grateful that you decided to meet today, because when they wanted to postpone it for two weeks, I said, you know what? We need to get going today. So I'm, I'm very, very thankful that you all came here today.
Well, we had kind of a skating rink.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend the press conference this morning, but I am really looking forward to this team coming to play hockey in our community. I'm excited for our families and our businesses about the opportunities and revenue that this new sports team will provide. And thank you for your presentation this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hendricks.
Just kind of going off of that, I just wanted to thank city staff, because, you know, in this line of work, there's often negativity. And we've had so much negativity around the arena for so many years. And so I really appreciate city managers, arts and entertainment, and everything that has gone into this. Really excited.
I'd like to motion that we approve this item as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Montney, second by Councilmember Danenberger. Let's go ahead and vote. Oh, Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Nobody had to remind me. Okay, the item passes. There are no names to announce. So again, thank you and congratulations. We're very excited to have you here and looking forward to a lot of hockey games.
Yeah, thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to move to the next item, which is city manager's discussion.
I don't know if this is appropriate, but I actually don't have any discussion, so.
No, that, that's good. And, and the mayor's discussion, I do not have anything either, because I realize everyone has made an effort to come here at a very, you know, it's time pressed. So we'll just move on to council members. Okay, no, Councilmember Bowlin, anything to say?
No, I can make a motion to adjourn if you'd like.
Yes, we will take that. Thank you. Second by Councilmember Hendricks. I was in favor, so if I by saying I Yes, we will take that, thank you. Second by Councilmember Hendricks. All those in favor, saying aye by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you very much.